We're gonna go ahead and get started with our regular council meeting, May 25th, 2017. Thank you all for being here tonight. Our chaplain is with us tonight, so... Who will, unless there's a volunteer who'd like to lead us? I will lead us in our... Do we have a volunteer who'd like to lead us?
I can do it. Ask Arnold.
Wonderful.
I'll just let you do it, my brother.
Well, I should've seen you on the list up here. Yes, sir, Reverend Terry Arnold.
Larry's saying, but I don't know that many.
Well, if you would mind leading us in our invocation and pledge to the flag. Thank you, sir. If everyone would please stand.
Father, as we come to you tonight, so very thankful for this beautiful day you've given us. Thank you all for the blessings of God that has been upon our city and our area. We ask you all tonight to guide every liberation that's done tonight. Touch our hearts and minds, we pray, and bid off the glory of God to Jesus. I read what he just said.
...that the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir. I feel like you've done that before. Maybe once or twice. Head to roll call, please.
Here, Labor.
Here.
Fastway School. Councilmember Cagle.
Here.
Councilmember Pelton.
Here.
Councilmember Williams.
Here.
City manager Miller.
Here.
City manager.
Here. Okay, we have our consent agenda before us. That would include the minutes for the May 11th, 2017 Agenda Work Session, as well as the minutes for the May 11th Regular Council Meeting. Included in that is the financial report for April 2017, as well as a declaration of surplus property. We will entertain a motion in regard to the consent agenda when any member of the council is ready to do that.
Make a motion to approve.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Head to roll call, please.
Councilmember Cagle.
Here.
Yes.
Councilmember Pelton.
Yes.
Councilmember Williams.
Yes.
Merril.
Yes. It's easy to do. It's easy to do. All right, at this time, we will entertain communication from citizens. If you are a resident of the city of East Ridge or business owner here in the city and have a comment, question, or concern you'd like to bring to the council, this would be your opportunity to do so. If you would please approach one of the two microphones here at the front and state your name and address for the record. You'll have five minutes. We do have a sign-in sheet, and there are six people on that. But if you didn't have opportunity to sign this, we will give you an opportunity to speak, even if you didn't sign it. So the first person on the list is Laura Mathis, 2100 McBryant Road.
Counselor. I must have a reputation. I heard my name when I came in the building, and I said, "This is gonna be a long evening, 'cause that bar Mathis is here." I don't quite cause any trouble about the housing authority. I'll get to that in just a minute. I have a couple other things. I wanted to know if we were still pursuing a car, a caravan, or...
Yes.
Tristifation?
Yes, we are.
Okay, 'cause our contract runs out soon?
In about a year.
Oh, okay. I also wanted to give you some information. The East Ridge United Methodist Church on 1601 Great Road is giving boxes of food to the needy on Wednesdays from 2:00 p.m. to 5:00 p.m. And that's the East Ridge United Methodist Church. The Angelical Lutheran Church of the Ascension at 720 South Germantown has also installed what they call a blessing box, or a little food pantry. And you can go to the little free box, and they're also doing one for books for children. So if you have any old children's books that you want to donate, you could put it in the free library that's at 720 South Germantown. And that's the Evangelical Church of Ascension. So we have two churches that are stepping into meet and need that our community definitely needs. My son was valedictorian at East Ridge five years ago.
Ah.
So, yes, graduations are great. He's one year away from his doctorate in aerospace engineering.
Crazy.
East Ridge can be very high school if you want it, but it's where you make it, you know?
It's amazing the number of people who have gone on to tremendous success.
Yeah.
I mean, doctors, lawyers, athletes.
The opportunity...
Just a number of different walks of life where people have excelled after starting here.
Yeah, the opportunity is available. The child has the launch. You can't force children to love a man. Okay, I wanted to apologize to you there. You had said two weeks ago that you weren't gonna be here. And I was on social media, and I called you Carol for not being here tonight. And I wanted to say, "Man, I'm wrong. I'm wrong," and I apologize.
I didn't read that, but I appreciate your apology, certainly.
I just, I don't wanna make the Housing Authority a pain, but it just seems like with 48% of East Ridge being renters, we're gonna have to hire inspectors, that sort of thing. I know you were gonna name your counsel tonight, and so I'm looking forward to that. But how many paid positions will there need to be under creating this authority?
For the Housing Redevelopment Authority, really, initially, now that body is going to hire their own counsel, their own attorney, in much the same way the IDB chose Mark Maimatoff to serve them. That really is the only paid position, if you will, that will be associated with that. Now, they will work in concert by necessity with the city, city council, city staff, code enforcement, chief building official, Custer. So they're gonna be working with all of, really with all the necessary staff that the city already has in place. Their finances are gonna be dependent upon what this council essentially allows them to have.
Yeah, I would think you would have to add maybe an inspector or...
Well, at this point, no. It will, again, that board will function in a complementary way, I believe, with our current staff. So there's really not gonna be any kind of additional employment expenditure.
Okay, and Mr. Cagle had brought up that the wording in the law says unsafe or unhealthy or both. So did that change in the legal wording of it?
I'm not sure.
'Cause you went...
Right, that's sanitary, right.
Oh, okay, yeah.
It could be, it basically says if it's unsafe or unsanitary housing, or a combination of the two.
And I hate to talk about this, but I'm gonna bring up the topic of drugs in East Ridge. And I'm glad that we're giving a couple of grants to help with that. I know that there are several hotel, motel, whatever you wanna call them, that are notorious for having drug access. And I hope that we can do something about that through the drug task enforcement officers. I know you didn't want to shut down Cascades, but I'd like to see also included Waverly.
We're working with them now.
Okay. And 14 people, out of all the cases that the judge saw on Tuesday, 14 were either alcohol or drug possession. And I just, you know, like she said earlier, you know, if we can try to nip this in the bud, I don't want East Ridge to be known as the crack capital of Chattanooga. I'll give her this piece with the pantry information.
Okay. Well, thank you very much for sharing that information. Absolutely. You know, it's programs like that that don't get enough publicity.
Right.
And so to share it here is a good thing. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next person we have is someone who has a name I love. Mary Lambert, from 701 Marlboro Avenue.
Good evening. I just wanted to provide some points of information regarding an event that's coming to the Chattanooga area. I am Mary Lambert, live at 701 Marlboro Avenue. Retired, I'm a retired O6. Had lived here, found a beautiful home here about 2003, so almost four years now. Wonderful neighbors, really happy to be here. The 52nd Annual United States Public Health Service Training Symposium and Conference will be in the Chattanooga area, the Convention Center, June 6th through 9th. I'm happy to provide a link for folks who wanna take a look at it. Would be loved to have some additional elected officials, if you want to attend at least the opening. Make sure that I know so that we can recognize your presence. Everyone will make you talk, but you may wanna be there. Just a bit about the conference. We have, as of last week, over 850 individuals pre-registered. We generally have around 1,000 people at the conference every year. It's an annual conference. The sponsoring foundation is the Commissioned Officers Foundation in Washington DC area. I'm a board trustee for that foundation. And we go to a different city every year. Last year, we went Oklahoma City. The year before, we're all in North Carolina. And next year is Dallas. So I just happened to open my mouth and suggest the Chattanooga area. Got a couple of chuckles until the conference contractor and the executive director came down, took a look, and went, "Wow." So they're real pleased to be coming. The individuals who attend are health professionals, for the most part, in the uniform services. You can see quite a few uniforms in the area. Primarily US Public Health Service, which is one of the seven uniform services. Physicians, nurses, dieticians, pharmacists, statisticians, attorneys, UMA if we have it. We'll also have a number of high-level individuals from the Washington DC area. I do know that the Acting Assistant General of the United States will be there. That's Rear Admiral Two Star, because she's acting. Rear Admiral Sylvia Trent Adams will be there, along with some other elected officials. We're trying to invite as many of them as we can, just because there's a lot of policy pieces that are discussed at the conferences, all the scientific pieces. Again, there'll be many uniforms there, so get used to that. A number of the officers who are coming up for this conference will be coming up from the Atlanta area. Many of those who are state, many of those individuals are stationed at the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention. They'll be flying to Chattanooga. They're real delighted to find a flight, direct flight from, well, they, I don't know why there wasn't a direct flight from Atlanta, but there is. But there's a direct flight, six days a week, from Washington DC. A lot of officers will be coming from there as well. I've turned them on to group transportation, so that if they wanna drive, they can drive, or if they don't, they can just get on a room and come to the area. There'll be multiple federal departments there. Department of Defense, Department of Health and Services, EPA, VA, so lots of folks like that, elected officials. Again, if you'd like to attend at least the opening, please let me know, 'cause I'd like to make sure you're recognized in the comments. I can send the link if that's helpful, so that you can take a look at the agenda. The presenters will be there. The high-level officials will be there. There, part of the conference does include a Surgeons General run. That happens every year. I don't know where I'm at yet, but I'm sure it'll be interesting and challenging for those who like to run. And there's also, as part of the conference, an evening fundraiser dinner with a speaker and a silent auction funds to go to a scholarship program. And the foundation is a 501(c)(3), so anything that you, if you do the dinner or whatever, it's tax deductible. And there is a conference event. Folks will start coming in a week from tomorrow for the rally that's set up in the mode area medical event in the Hamilton County area. I think that happens Saturday and Sunday. We just happen to have a few pre-conference activities on Monday, and then the opening is on Tuesday. It goes through the 9th of June. And that's how I'll conduct the interview in a nutshell. If you have questions, I'm happy to provide my information. And again, if you'll let me know if you want the link, I can send that and you can share it with your folks.
I think that would be great. Thank you very much.
Judge Judy Sees.
Thank you.
Thank you. It's a good idea. I'm bringing that. It's neat that it's coming to our area. Very good. All right, the next person we have on our list is Robert Parks, 1608 John Ross Road.
We're on back about the ATP track. Property I own has been cued from being an ATP track. I told you last week, or two weeks ago, that me and my grandsons are all the ones that ride on it. And there was discussion that, you know, it's all over the property values. Well, this is what is next door to my property. This is Big Floyd's property. Passed this around since that meeting. He has just completed a fence to cover this up. Now, will it remain? Mr. Custer's been in contact with me. He's helped me greatly that this will be removed. But it is a fence up now where I cannot see it, or he cannot see, I guess, my property. This is at the back of my property that has been dumped on my property from 1803 Glen Oaks Place. The people with the pool that says they couldn't use it because of the dust. Well, this is what they've thrown out behind their pool. If you'd like for me to pass it around, I'd be glad to show it to you. So how long would you think it takes to grow stuff up through a boat like that? Years? What about that? Would you like that next to your property? My grandson's riding ATVs sporadically. That has been sitting there 24/7, obviously for years. That's the supposed ATP track. That's my property. See any difference?
Would you mind bringing that one just a little closer? Just wanna see that bottom photo there.
This is the back of my property, all the trees. That's the front of John Ross Road. There's over 200 trees on my land. That's the back of my property, the bottom photo. The top photo is from John Ross Road. So does it really look like I'm running a motocross track up there, folks? Mr. Jones stated that he couldn't use his pool last year. There's a good reason he couldn't use his pool, 'cause Mr. Jones don't have a pool at 1805 Glen Oaks Place. But this is what I was up against. I mean, if that's, how long does it take to let out of sight of the building? A lot longer than it does for me to ride an ATV. Top got lower in property values. What's that from there? And that's what's thrown out behind my property from Glen Oaks. All their pool supplies. Mr. Custer's been very helpful in trying to reconcile this. That's all I'm upset about.
Well, I appreciate you bringing the photos. It does help to have a clearer picture of the property that's been talked about. Thank you very much. Okay, the next person on our list is Jenna White, from 1324 Laredo Avenue.
That's my dad, and I've pretty much grown up in East Ridge my entire life. My husband, my father-in-law own a business here. It's White and Bill's Auto Store, right over behind my house. My kids go to school here. I have two boys, one is seven, one just turned 13. And they do, well, they're four-wheelers that my dad had purchased for them for Christmas and birthdays and what have you. And they do not ride consistently like it has been made to believe, because I work 10 to 12 hours a day at Memorial and work with cancer patients, and I don't have that kind of time for my kids to be riding consistently. Have a very strict schedule, work all the time. Husband constantly works. Kids are always with us. I'm a stepson, with his mom, 85% of the time. We have him the rest. So on the weekends or during the week after school, I'd have to get one or both of the boys take on a little ride for a little bit. I've been up there myself. I originally co-owned the property with him, and he bought me out. And, you know, we had it clear, you know, as far as, again, his property, you know, within reason, he should be able to do what he wants. You know, I feel like my kids should be able to ride their four-wheelers as they want and not be such an issue, I feel like, since all this has been going on. My dad's been from ass, bowling. Police courts have been filed on him. I've talked to him, I'll read about it. You know, my grandpa would build a 52-foot yacht here way, way long ago, before I was even thought about. And in order for him to get that boat out of the garage that we have, they had to bring in bulldozers to take down power lines. There was a start-up, 'cause there was no concrete. I mean, I don't understand why my kids riding maybe three hours a month, probably not even that much, is such a major concern. You know, there's plenty of other things that flew there. Tidying it has the worst allergies ever. And, you know, just dust, I mean, everybody has dust. You can start up dust driving in a dark road. I mean, it's just, it's ridiculous. So, I mean, I don't want my kids to be punished because somebody has too much time on their hands and can't keep their nose on their side of the thing, basically. I teach my kids to not bully people, and this is exactly what's happening today, so.
Thank you.
Thanks.
The next person we have is C. David Roden, 1336 Blocker Lane.
It's my name, C.D. Roden. I just wanna find out what progress has been made as far as getting Carter's service in East Ridge.
We've, I don't know how much of the overall story you've heard. We had a community input session over at the community center. I got a lot of good ideas. Carter has synthesized those opinions that were stated there, has presented a report. Mr. Miller and I had a chance to meet with them, and this was, or she went on to, but we had a chance to meet with the Carter officials last week. Yes. And so we are planning a date for them to come and make a presentation to council citizens. We're looking at, I think it was, I think it's in July. We're gonna go out for a monthly survey to the residents to get a little more information in regard to what bus transportation services that they would like to see. We're also working with another nonprofit organization in regard to bus transportation for the elderly and for the disabled. It would be about to say, we're working with them on. Once we get the results from the monthly survey, I believe it's the first meeting in July that we decide on. I can pull up that date with a clip here. Let's see. July 13th, Amanda?
Yes, sir.
That's, we're gonna have a study session here. What I plan to do is have a work session starting at 5:30 moving up, so we have plenty enough time. Martin will be here to give their presentation on what's availability and availability of bus transportation services, expansion of, et cetera. So, yes, Carter, sorry, what did I say? Martin? I still have a little wendy. Still, fast transportation. So that will be scheduled for 5:30 on July 13th. So hope to see you there for the meeting. Yes, sir. Thank you for being here tonight. All right, the next person is Reverend Terry Arnold.
Thank you, Miss Mann. And first of all, I'll say thank you for showing, starting here. I was kind of thankless to ask, but thank you so much. We moved to East Ridge 21 years ago, began working the church vision. And when we were coming, I was asking what part of Chattanooga would you like to go? And I said, "Well, there's no doubt in my mind, I wanna go to East Ridge." The reason for that is, back in the 80s, we were starting a church in Dayton, but I was working a tank ship route here in Chattanooga. And the last route I ran was East Ridge. Fell in love with the community and the people. And so advanced several years in 96, we became a church. And my wife and I and my son. And God has blessed that church. We now have over 200 attendance, not members, I'm talking attendance. We have a Hispanic church also that is involved in our church. And we do a lot of community service. Most of it, most people would never hear about, because we just don't spread the word like that. But our children's department is desiring to do what's commonly called our church members' block party. And basically what it is, we set up a small PA system and do puppet shows and a little bottom study, and give out free food, free bottles of water to the community. And of course, we would want to advertise in the community. And, of course, we would, uh, want to advertise in the community, and we already have plans to do that. And so, it is a way in which our church can give back to the community. Uh, unfortunately, right now, uh, our building is just across the state line. It's only running, it's going down Lake Winnie. It's, the Pentecostal's on the right inside there. Uh, as soon as we can get some property here in East Ridge that we can afford, we want to come to East Ridge. Uh, that's where we have to start. And, uh, so that's, that's what we are here to, I propose, Larry's a dear friend of mine, I drive a lot for him. May have to come over and get some. But, uh, I drive a bus also part-time. So, that's what we're going to do, I think, it's like the second week in June. And, uh, Larry said, he looked at the agenda, it didn't look like nothing was going on at the park. So, on the Thursday night, we would only be about an hour and a half or so. It's just a way in which we can give back to the community. But we'll have a religious...
So, you're interested in having it at Camp Jordan?
Uh, no, at the Pioneer Park. We want to come here close into the city. Uh, we're actually going to canvass the neighborhood children and invite them to come. Uh, it's just, it's not about solicitation to our church. That's an irrelevant part. We are just here to try to bring something positive to the community, that's what I'm here for. Uh, I'll have to look that up. It's in June. I've got it on here. It is, uh, June the eighth, on a Thursday evening.
Yeah, and it's the same as us.
Well, y'all won't be able to get free hot dogs in the way. What if the... It starts at six-thirty when this does. What if we just bring you free hot dogs? Hold on there.
We won't turn it down.
No, we won't turn it down, that's right. But we will not be...
I'd just like to have a count for me.
Yeah, we won't be charging, there will be no funds at all solicited. This is all just a gift. We do a lot of community service, although our buildings across the state line, the majority of our folks live in East Ridge, in the Rossville area. And so, we do a little lot of community service, uh, room at the end. Uh, we do a lot of personal things for families. During holidays, we do a lot of gift baskets and various things that the community is trying to give back. So, we're here to be able to.
Sir?
Very good.
Do you have any objection, Council?
Very good. Thank you, folks. Appreciate your service.
Thank you. That was the last person who had signed in. Do we have another? Yes, sir. If you'll just come forward here and state your name and address for the record, please.
My name's Aaron Perez. Uh, my wife and I are the owners of eighteen oh three Glen Oaks. Uh, we're the owners of the house with the pool. Uh, we just bought the house a little, not even a year ago. Uh, we moved here from California, lived in San Diego. In California, if you have a fence, that is your property. I never, I mean, I saw the trash, and Mr. Parks just pointed it out. Until I got a letter today from the city, I had no idea that was my property. So, I will take care of that. Just for the record, his daughter just contradicted, contradicted of Mr. Parks' testimony from what he said two weeks ago. They've ridden more than three hours a month. We wouldn't be here if last summer, you know, it was over. They admitted last time they rode, it was really dusty. They also rode at night at least twice until nine or ten at night. We don't want to prevent his grandkids or anybody from riding, but, uh, you know, having, this is the first time I had a pool. That dust caused us to, you know, we had to put more chemicals and more things to keep it clean. We're, we're new here. You know, they all say how long they've been here, we're new. We don't want any trouble, we don't want to, you know, I have grandkids. I have a son that has an ATV, ATVs also, but he lives on five acres in Texas. I will get my property clean now that I know that that belongs to me. We came to California, if you have a fence, that is your property. I do not know that was my, my son.
Certainly, I think we can all understand that.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you for being here. All right, do we have another who has not already spoken? Let's see, no. We will move to communication from council members. Mr. Cabello?
I have to go.
Mr. Williams? Ms. Ellen?
I think I have this time.
Okay. Just to remind everyone of some upcoming dates. Uh, we do have, of course, the, the first council meeting of June will be on the eighth, as we've talked about already. I believe the city attorney will, will not be here, you're on vacation. How dare you? Uh, he, he will be on vacation, I believe Perry Cash will be here in his place. The following week, June eleventh through thirteenth, tenth through thirteenth, is the Tennessee Municipal League Annual Conference in Murfreesboro. So, I believe pretty much all of us going, except for Larry, I think.
Larry's not going, I think everybody out here is going.
So, uh, those dates are coming up. Prior to those, Monday, Memorial Day, we will have our traditional Memorial Day service over at Pioneer Park at one o'clock.
Right.
One o'clock, so, uh...
You're speaking right after Jackie.
Okay. No, we flip for it. That's always a, a great service, uh, usually very well attended. And, uh, so if, if any of you have some, some free time that afternoon, I would encourage you to come out and, and take part. Uh, it's, it's special, it really is. So, again, that's Monday at one o'clock, right over in front of the playground at, at the Pioneer Frontier. All right, that's all that I have. Mr. Miller?
Yeah, one announcement. On exit one, that project, we're hopefully getting that up to bid in July, start construction in August, that's what we're pushing hard for. Representative Mark Rabbit, who sat up here for four years, went off last November. Came to me several months ago and said, do you need more money for exit one? We're getting a million dollars from the state on that project. I said, heck yeah, we'll take as much as we can. He said, well, how about five hundred thousand? I'm like, well, we got word the other day at, at a, I guess, training seminar T-Dot's putting on that the city got the five hundred thousand dollars, additional dollars for exit one. So, I want to thank Representative Mark Rabbit from our district for helping us get that additional money. So, that's a million and a half coming in now from T-Dot for exit one construction.
Good news. I think we get every day. It's excellent. It's excellent. That will be a... I don't get all of them. Not gonna tell any tales on this. It's gonna be inconvenient while it's going on. It, it's gonna be a, a real traffic issue down there, but, uh, when it's finished, it will make such a huge difference in terms of access to all of the businesses there, to Camp Jordan Park itself. It takes away what I think is, is quite possibly the most dangerous little area on any of our, our local interstate exits, and that's where you, if you're trying to merge onto I seventy-five north, you have to hit the cloverleaf. And you're trying to merge in at about two hundred feet of road, you're trying to merge onto the interstate while other people are trying to get over into your lane to hit the cloverleaf to go north on forty-one. That is a hazardous area, and that's, that's part of what T-Dot provided the million dollars to begin with is because it, it helps them alleviate what is a, a real traffic hazard. So, it will be, be fantastic to have that completed. It makes such a big difference. Right, yep.
That's it, sir. Thank you.
Fantastic. All right, we will, with that, we will move on to old business. And appointments to the library board.
Yes, sir, I spoke to Diana Mansfield, and she said she'd like to take her spot there so that I reappoint.
Fantastic. All right, and I haven't spoken with, with Matt Penley. I would say he's probably interested in continuing on the IDB. I don't, don't know that for a fact. If council would like to, we could tell him that we have reappointed him, and if he... And if he has an objection, he could tell us at that point. But he's done a fine job, you know, he's been here forever today and knows East Ridge as well as probably the... So, if, if council would like to move in that direction, then certainly I'd be willing to move in that direction.
I have an objection at that time.
All right, and with that, uh, that being said, if we could get a, just as a way of memorializing, if, uh, if we could get a motion in a second to approve these appointees.
Motion to approve Diana Mansfield and Matt Penley back to the board for currently representing.
Yes, sir.
Second?
There's a motion and a second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Cabello?
Yes.
Councilmember Alt? Yes. Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
Gonna make it?
Yes.
All right. Uh, my appointees to the Housing and Redevelopment Authority. To give you a little bit of background, uh, in a similar way to Matt Penley, you know, I've, I've looked at, at folks who have, uh, have been at East Ridge a while, they've seen some of the heaven flow of, of what has happened here. Now, I can still remember people telling me about how it was in the seventies and eighties when this was such a desirable place to be that realtors had waiting lists of, of people who were looking for houses here. Yeah, we, we obviously had a period of stagnation. I think we're rolling again, and we're moving in a good direction. And so, the folks that, that I have, uh, reached out to would be, uh, trying to be to assign a length of term to each one, is that correct? That would be staggered.
That's very one's five, so, first one, however you were running to, one, have a one-year, two-year, three-year, four-year, five-year.
All right. I'll start at five and work down, how's that? For the, uh, five-year term, Mr. Darrell Brandon. For the, uh, four-year term, Mr. Eddie Phillips. For the three-year term, Ms. Ruth Brawley. Ruth Brawley, B-R-A-L-Y. For the two-year term, Mr. Earl Wilson. And for the one-year term, old pal Kurt Sanders. So, uh, it's funny, I ran into him at the, we were having lunch, ran into him at the Epicurean. He was, uh, enthusiastic, to say the least. So, those are the, the five appointees. And I would like to, we, we have to send some documentation to the Secretary of State and to get it set up. We will have an organizational meeting to, uh, bring everybody together. I didn't know if there was anything you wanted to, to share about that process.
Yeah, for people to have some knowledge as to the next step. Now, the commissioners have been selected, those commissioners shall present to the Secretary of State an application signed by them, which will set forth the details of the following. Notice has been given and a public hearing has been held with regard to the creation of a Housing and Redevelopment Authority, the enabling resolution that was formed in the last meeting in April. They'll have that in the application, they'll have the name of official residence, meeting the commissioners, together with a certified copy of the appointment evidence and their right to this office. The term of office for each commissioner will be presented to the Secretary of State, and the name of the proposed corporation, which I understand is mainly East Ridge Housing and Redevelopment Authority. And then they'll select a principal location for the office. That will get submitted upon the first meeting. We'll, we'll, I'm happy to assist them, but they will also, at that meeting, go ahead and prepare their own bylaws and governance tools that are consistent with the laws of the formation thirteen twenty dash four hundred for a municipal housing authority.
Thank you, sir. So, again, these folks have a have a history here at the community. Couple of them have actually been elected officials here. One currently is, is on the IDB and is, um, also on the Hamilton County Election Commission, as certain chairman of that body. So, it's a, uh, I think it's a pretty solid group. And, uh, look forward to, uh, working with them and, again, for all of us to have, uh, have a shared goal of moving the community forward. Yes, sir.
Now, may I say?
Yes, sir.
All right. Back in May of twenty sixteen, brought up that we as a council to reinstate the housing board. So, we ought to redo stuff. By June the twentieth, we had all made our appointments. We were to use this rental, we were to use this board as a rental to, to control undesirable living conditions. Something was brought up with that population limit. Representatives legislation, highest lower population limit to allow East Ridge to create and enforce the rental inspection with our coach department and our housing board, okay? Last council meeting, I was told that the housing authority, the housing authority cannot come into other city limits, other municipalities. Then I done a research since then, the Chattanooga Housing Authority serves about eighteen different small cities outside of Chattanooga. And that includes East Ridge. They serve low-income housing, section eight apartments. So, in my opinion, our coach department can handle unsafe conditions in provided areas. Legislation was put on the floor by Mark Rabbit, and it was passed for us to create this rental board, inspection board to enforce our unsafe and provided areas, so. Thank you for listening, Jim.
Well, I, I do think the rental inspection program is, will be a very excellent tool of what, what that cannot do, and what the city cannot do minus the housing authority, is if, uh... is if, if we have an incident where there is a, what I would call a repeat offender of someone who's just not going to, not going to place a high priority on keeping their building, or buildings as safer sanitary. The housing authority allows us, quite frankly, to condemn. That's a pretty significant tool to have. It's a way of clearing blight as well. The city is very limited in its ability, minus the housing authority, to clear blight, to declare a site as a blighted area to condemn it, pay fair market value for it, and allow it to be redeveloped. And, you know, there have, through the years, been a lot of people who have bemoaned the fact that, hey, Ringgold Road looks like Russell Boulevard. Well, you know, this is an opportunity to provide another tool that, that will help in revitalization of Ringgold Road. You know, and this board, they are going to have to work in concert with this council. They can't, they can't just take on a redevelopment project on their own. A, because they, they can't based on Tennessee code annatating, but B, because they don't have funding source of their own. Any money they get is going to have to come from the city of East Ridge. So, we're all going to have to work in concert if such a redevelopment project takes place. So, you know, again, I, whether the city of Chattanooga could come in and potentially have their housing authority reach into our city limits. I don't, I mean, I don't know, I don't know the answer to that question, yes or no. What I do know, okay, and that's great. What I do know is that I don't want the city of Chattanooga coming into East Ridge and telling us what to do. That's why we have our own charter. I mean, that's why we started our own planning commission, because we didn't have a single person who lived in the city of East Ridge serving on the Hamilton County Planning Commission. And so we had a bunch of people who weren't from East Ridge making decisions that greatly impacted the city of East Ridge. And so we said, hey, you know what, this doesn't seem quite right. Maybe, maybe I have an incorrect view of that. That's a matter of opinion. I think these kinds of decisions need to stay in on with us. So, that's, that's what I have to say. Again, I appreciate, you know, the differing opinions, and that's, that's fine. That's just my feeling, though. All right, so, we have, do we have any other comments or questions, council? All right. I would see discuss taking action on ATVs and residentially separate areas.
But the city attorney has worked with J.R.A. himself and Kenny Custer back and forth on this, so you have a draft and I'm going to let the author pretty much go through it. And we're, we're here to help you respond to any questions. I know Kenny and she were here tonight regardless of when it comes up, boys.
Mayor, to the council, at the last meeting, my understanding that I was sent marching orders to attempt to draft some form of an ordinance that would attempt to best to strike a balance between the property rights of owners to use their property the way they can fit and balance that interest against residential adjacent properties of those that may be impacted by the use of what we've categorized here as a recreational motorized vehicle. In connection with those efforts, I have been in substantial conversations with our city manager, with our chief building official, and our chief police, because those are the, particularly the chief police, the chief building official, the codes enforcementists are going to be the two entities that are charged with enforcing this ordinance, whatever form it, it took place or approval. And so, we've met, I met individually with each one of them on some multiple occasions, and then we've also had a global conference together. And what came out of that is that a package of yours has been handed out to you that has been labeled as an ordinance to regulate the operation of recreational motorized vehicles within the city limits of East Ridge. And you will see the recitals in there, the best that we can come up with to, again, strike a balance with all the interests that are certainly being considered in connection with this matter. I think we've heard some good presentations by the citizens of this city. And the, listening to the constituents as well as talking with our department heads, we have several sections that have come out of the ordinance here. We've got definitions, the idea being that we want to make sure to the extent an ordinance is adopted, we want it to be clear and concise, and we want it to be able to be enforceable as well as predictable. We want the property owners of this city to recognize what their rights are in connection with the use of a recreational vehicle, and we want to make sure that owners have the ability to operate one, provided however that it is consistent with the interests that are being considered with this ordinance. So in section two, you'll see that there's a few definitions that we provided in there. Owner, occupant, the operator. We provided to give a, the best that we could, a definition of a recreational motorized vehicle. We have defined what would be the riding area, and we have the term, what would be mandatory language as opposed to discretionary in regards to where it shall. And so, section three, playing upon these definitions, restricts the use of any form of ATV, dirt bike, or other recreational motorized vehicle, except as those can provide a form in section four. When you look at section four, you'll see a series of, I think we ended up getting A through L, or A through M, I think is what it is, is what we've got. And the best that we could come up with at this time was one of the researches that your city listed in this draft ordinance. Looking down, going through the, wanted to make sure that property owners that are using a four-wheeler for landscaping purposes, yard maintenance, utility reasons for that nature, brush clearing, that's been provided for as an exception to the otherwise ban on ATVs on properties. And so we provided that in section C. That's, we thought, that's pretty clear, it provides clarity to property owners that if you're using a clear brush or any type of maintenance, utility type lawn landscaping, that that's permitted use. We've regulated, or suggested a recommended time for the use of ATVs based upon the interest that we heard from residents of this city, and developed a time of eleven to seven P.M. until sunset, whichever comes first, with a ban on Sunday and federally recognized holidays. In our discussions, we did recognize that maybe that may be a day when lots of residents are not working, and it would be a good day to repair or maintenance their vehicles. And so we carved out an exception to the otherwise bans on Sundays and federally recognized holidays to provide a time, the same hours of operations, eleven to seven, that you could repair or work to repair or maintenance of the vehicle of the ATV. And we have carved that out and allowed for a time that you can do it for purposes of Section E deals with the minimal length at which a, or the minimal distance at which a user or occupant or operator of a motorized vehicle, recreational motorized vehicle can come. We select the distance of fifty feet from residential property line. Section F requires that there be shown proof of, proof of ownership of the motorized vehicle so that we don't have a scenario that individuals, they can unimprove property and unbeknownst to them, that users or operators of ATVs are going on those properties to ride. We wanted to carve out a section that would not necessarily penalize the owner of that property, may not have knowledge of people going on the property riding, so we have required proof of ownership of the vehicles. And so if an owner or an operator of a vehicle is using it on land not theirs, then we provide a vehicle here to be able to restrict that. If they can get any sort of, if there's permission that can be shown there, then they would be allowed for that. The man-made tracks in section G is an effort to ensure that no one is buying land with the intent of putting on a track for the purpose of training for or conducting competition type of events for ATVs. All operations of ATVs in section H must comply with all local, state, and federal laws. Under the state of Tennessee, there are some restrictions on ATV use, including those on public roads and man-ordered staircases that are permitted to cross. There's some restrictions under state park use in ATVs, and this will require that all users and operators of ATVs comply with the local and state federal laws. Section, what I've got is section K. We are trying to, section K and section L, we're trying to strike a balance here, which I've talked about before, and this council talked about it two weeks ago, that there's got to be a way to measure to some degree of certainty what exactly the interference or the disruption of the use of an ATV is actually causing. And while the intent is not to outlaw the use of all ATVs, the intent is to regulate it in a way that is, can be consistent in harmony with all residents. We, talking with the police chief, and he's got a decibel reader, that we came up with what we thought would be a good amount, that if it's standing at the property line of the operator's property line, if there is a decibel level or emission, or noise emission that exceeds eighty-eight decibels at the property line, then that would be a violation of this ordinance. And this allows the police officers that are being called out, we tried to illuminate a situation where police officers were being called, or code enforcement's being called out, every time there's a user of an ATV, and they go out there and they're left in a subjective position. That's hard on the officers. And Chief Reed spoke candidly about that and explained to us that that's putting officers in a tenable position as well as potentially dangerous position. So we have a measure here of a quantifiable, definable measure of eighty-eight decibels standing at the property line. We added in there that the motor, that the ATV or recreational motorized vehicles shall not be in any way have mufflers that are altered in any way to increase the noise, which would include the removal of the muffler such that it was increased noise, federally approved park resters, and any sort of cutoff bypass or other similar type devices. And another effort to try to regulate, we recognize that at some point it may become dangerous for more than two vehicles to be used at one time on a property, and so we're limiting it to two. And lastly, we have identified a potential situation where the dust, which we understand has been raised as a concern by the residents, the last section, section L, provides what we believe to be a workable resolution to the issue, which would reconcile the issue of the absence of dust arising, such that if dust is arise, being brought up by the use of the ATVs, then the requirement that that operator and or owner of the property water down and spray down that undeveloped or unvegetated riding area, which we believe would combat the cause of dust. These are the restrictions, or there's the, these are the exceptions to the restrictions of the use of ATV, which, having looked at, we looked at about six or seven, you just found six, seven ordinances, as well as looked at residential codes and noise ordinances as well, to try to capture what we believe in this ordinance, the interest of everyone to the best of our ability, such that the use of an ATV is still permitted, albeit in a manner that is consistent with maintaining the peace and harmony of the community. We have a method that we would require for violations in enforcement, this would be enforcement to the code enforcement as well as the police department. And the, what we want to do is in section seven, we've got it right now, that we want to have teeth to this, so if there is a violation, there was discussion about the ability to bring this under the AHO. Mr. Custer and I will look at the ability to bring that under the AHO, if that is the will of the council. There is various amendments, this legislative section regarding the administrative hearing officer statute. Mr. Custer's been looking at that to determine if it's possible to bring this under the AHO regulations, such that the enforcement, which we thought would be a fair, because under those, it allows, well, rather than an automatic citation, it would allow an operator of a vehicle that was otherwise in violation to at least be given a chance to cure that problem. And so we wanted to be able to look at this as a way to be remedial for the individuals that are affected by the use of ATVs, but not necessarily be punitive to those that are using the ATVs. That's the statute, or the, excuse me, the ordinance components that we have crafted and prepared and presented with this council pursuant to directions from the last meeting.
So what this ordinance is saying, number K here, that you take two vehicles up and around, here are these legal matters. Ones are fifty foot off of each property line.
That'd be correct.
On the inside of that, it's timed in and doesn't affect that.
Which time are you referring to?
D.
Okay.
You've got two acres, you go up right under fifty foot off to each side, fifty foot off the back, you get in there and you ride around and around the middle of it. So the back of the order is about fifty foot, fifty foot.
I think I, make sure I understand your statement. If two, if one property is consisting of two acres, correct? And there's two operators of an ATV on that property, and they're staying within the fifty foot on all borders of it, assuming that they're complying with the other restrictions such as the dust, and I, but yes, essentially, under your question, there would be compliance under this ordinance. We can take action if we want to.
This is not before the council tonight on a consideration of the first reading of this ordinance. If the count, this is, this is brought to the council covering these items because each one of these items was brought up at the mayor's meeting, relative to the items to look at for regulations. If you don't agree with them, that's fine, but I think tonight what we're looking at is whether you want to move forward with this or not. Give us some direction as to D, which is hours of operation, the fifty feet from the residential line, the eighty-eight feet, the eighty-eight decibels that measure within the property owners to alter, these are all issues that we talked about in the past couple of meetings. several meetings. Look at direction tonight from the council, or the action of the council, if you want to move forward with this, absent or changing any one of these regulations that are in this text. But you cannot act on this tonight as first reading, because it hasn't been, what do you call it?
Correct, it hasn't been advertised.
Hasn't been advertised, nor has it been captioned on the agenda. This is not ready. This is a work in progress.
Right.
And covers all those items that we talked about.
When I said take action, you're saying exactly what?
Yes, exactly.
So it's not looking for a motion to approve this ordinance, looking for, is this what we want, to go forward with, or is it something that we want to make further changes to?
Correct.
The question that I was, Mr. Lishford, you mentioned that there was M, ATV, M in section four?
No, M, there's no M.
There is no M?
No.
Because dogs ride the after?
We had, we had an M, but we dropped a couple of them after, we had, we had a lot more of this, and we basically pared it down after our, all the leaders had a discussion on this, to say no. So we cut, I think we had N and M, we actually took down.
And if I, and I had lots of notes on mine from an old one, and I may have, and so I think we're at, what is the last?
L.
L?
Yes.
Okay. So my apologies on that.
Of course, because there, it is an ordinance and will require two readings. If council says, okay, let's just move forward with this, certainly it would be fine, appropriate to make changes prior to the first reading or during the first reading, or, you know, if it goes through the first reading, if there's tweaks that need to be made between the first and second reading, potentially that could happen as well. But right now, I think the question is, is this the foundational starting point that we want?
You know, by this being a recreational thing for kids, Sundays and holidays are probably the least, with the most that are going to be ridden.
have it acceptable on, but I could see, I could see Thanksgiving Day or Christmas Day as maybe, probably the best time to go ride. You look at other dates, July 4th, kind of thing, maybe.
I mean, I mean, as much as I agree as well, possibly you could open up a few hours on a Sunday holiday, I'll have to complete eleven to seven.
I mean, if it's Christmas and the kid is back, you say, can't rush your back.
Well, no, I agree, I understand. Right. And I think that, yeah, we have to make sure that we do strike a balance. If it is okay on holiday, you know, is it okay if they, you know, run for an extended period?
Like I said before, I don't, do not want, you know, any child or children, grandchildren from being around an ATV, enjoying the park.
True.
But we have to consider, whatever happens in the nuisance or park.
You have to consider too, sometimes on holidays and Sundays, the item may be simplified.
It's a fair point as well. Counsel, do you want to?
Do you want to think about it some more?
Do you want to just let this kind of roll forward?
I'm just, I'm just thinking, like, I might shoot up there, start on for that, go to that, I'll bring two more up there, work on for another hour, same thing. You know, that's kind of been a big picture, but if they want to get around it, that's how they want to get around it.
One thing we tried to do in that section D, that last, is put that maintenance use for that hour would be limited no more than one hour in the aggregate, so if it's, they were using it for twenty minutes on one set of four, whether to shift those off and bring it back, another set of twenty minutes, another set, that would be the aggregate. So we tried to, but that was a great point, Councilman, we talked about that every day, tried to capture that potential loop, but it ended with one hour in the aggregate.
I might just help, Sundays and holidays might be on a day that might have some provision of our kids, so.
You all, I was about to say, do you have a specific suggestion on what kind of hours?
I said I want to jump up here and jump down.
Maybe you want to think about that?
I'm happy with everything except for D.
D, okay.
I'm looking, moving forward, but I just wanted to say, and I'd like to bring Mr. Kaygo to discuss possibilities of Sundays and holidays, open it up, possibly something.
Absolutely, if this, you know, if this moves forward and we place it on, let's say, the June 8th agenda for first reading, you know, as, as just a practical matter, you could, you could move to adopt ordinance number, whatever it turns out to be, and say, with the amendment that operations be allowed on Sundays and holidays between twelve and two, or twelve to four, whatever, so, and you could do that all in one step, and it would be perfectly permissible. I do like the idea of having this under the administrative hearing officer, I think it could be a good thing in a couple of different ways.
Do you want to, if Mr. Custer and I will look, you want us to try and see if we can fit this under something that's permissible in the AHO? That's the will of council, I would, I would like that. Okay, I'll get Mr. Custer, we'll see if we can work with that. Mr. Millers, well.
Right. So, we're going to leave this right now, is that we would, we would like to see this come forward at our next council meeting, potentially, potentially for first reading. And of course, if we find between now and then that there's something else that we're not so sure about, or one extra time to think about, if it could be tabled, a number of things could happen. But potentially would be in front of us for first reading on June 8th, at which time we can address, in the form of a motion to approve the ordinance, we can address the time on Sundays and holidays, if council chooses to do that.
I have one more question. This hearing officer, is he going to be able to find out five hundred dollars?
That's what Mr. Custer and I will look at right there. So we'll, the statute's been amended, it's the last, it's dialled again, I think, so, but we will look at that, at council, and we'll get an answer for it. What I've put in there for this one was just based upon language of other ordinances, borrowing language from, but Mr. Custer and I will look at that.
It's a little typo there in section seven.
Such fine.
Exactly, the, the program probably depends, because Dens is a worker.
Just eight hours, we're looking at this, all eight hours in this case.
Well, if there are no other comments or questions, we'll proceed that way. All right. Under new business, excuse me, I have a nine A, the grant consent agenda, would consist of three resolutions, resolution twenty-six fifty-four, twenty-six fifty-five, twenty-six fifty-six.
A resolution of city council, city of East Ridge, Tennessee, authorizing the application for acceptance of Petsmart Charities intake diversion two thousand seventeen grant program. Resolution number two-six-five-five, a resolution of the city council of the city of East Ridge, Tennessee, approving the application for acceptance of fiscal year two thousand seventeen building better communities grant. Resolution number two-six-five-six, a resolution of the city council of the city of East Ridge, Tennessee, approving the application for an acceptance of fiscal year two thousand seventeen bark for your park grant.
Are there any questions? Do we have a motion in regard to the grant consent agendas?
Motion to pass the grant agenda.
Good.
I see it's all a hundred percent.
So the last, so the American Water, it's going to be a matching grant, is that what you would?
There's no match, it's up to over one hundred and fifty thousand dollars, so we're going for the full amount. However, the project may cost more than a hundred and fifty thousand, so I'm working with these engineering, they're trying to look me on getting this grant application, and we're going to try to find some financial backers as well. So while we're getting our letters together for support, we're trying to get some more financial support.
Okay, that's where the terms of matching grant is all that we had to do.
Yeah, a hundred percent, well, anytime you see a hundred percent matching, just think, we pay nothing.
Thank you.
And it's only when you see like eighty, twenty, which you're looking at twenty percent for us, which would be fifty, which would be fifty percent for us.
Okay, so we have a motion for Mr. Kaygo and a second for Ms. Hilton. Are there any other questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Counsel, excuse me, Councilmember Kaygo?
Yes.
Councilmember Hilton?
Yes.
Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
Really?
Yes.
Thank you very much, Counsel.
Thank you. Item nine B, resolution twenty-six fifty-seven.
A resolution of the city council, city of East Ridge, Tennessee, authorizing the execution of the license agreement with the Adventure Guild LLC to build a rope course and zip line at Camp Blue Park.
Number eight, says you're supposed to, part of money in, from previous fund, this fund, okay? And down here it says thirty days for closing the quarter. And, here. Over here it says year, so are we asking for the revenue from monthly, quarterly, or year?
We're asking for the invoice, invoices monthly, we're asking for the quarterly reports, the gross revenue quarterly, paying in thirty days.
Thirty days.
Today, one A, has the license to provide us on a monthly basis copies of the invoices showing program revenue. Then on, on, on two A, we're looking at additional quarterly reports, the gross revenue realized from the programs, adjust the ropes course specified, so it's the only two that we're doing this part, and then that ATV shall be paid within thirty days to close the quarter revenues are received.
Back there on the twenty-one.
Twenty-eight, one. Yes, sir.
Six-five.
Yes, sir.
Gross revenue in account statement. So get it quarterly, so the council will get it here.
Annual statement by either audit, yes. If it's missing out at that base, by the audit, maybe those, the audit will be done annually, yes, sir.
Let me say this, Mr. Davis is here with Adventure Guild, if you, if you have any questions, I can bring him to the podium.
He says here he's asked for a ten-year option with another ten years. Asked for ten-year.
Yes, sir.
Ten-year, yeah, this, this agreement is for a period of ten years, and then it says win the option to renew upon mutual agreement for the second ten years. Now, he's putting, he's invested a lot of capital to build these two courses, so he needs to get ten years out of it. If we find after ten years that everything's obsolete, that nothing's going right, he can basically opt for that second ten-year period. If things are going well, you want to add to it, you may go for another ten-year period, but by this contract, the maximum is twenty years, or twenty, twenty years, ten additional, and then second ten, he made his proof, his decision to move forward, and the city's decision to move forward for the second ten.
Okay, number ten, I'm sure, construction premises?
Yes.
We all know that's, that's, so, it comes in, repairs its ropes down.
He's got to repair it.
He gets to repair it.
Yes, sir. If you also look at number seven, that was my, that I modified, it says licensee required to maintain and keep in good repair all equipment in, in, I don't even know, some reduce the licensee, essential or original repairs shall be made at licensee expense, so if we see something without, that doesn't look quite to us, he's got to be.
About that here, the flood?
I understand that.
We are held responsible to do the repairing.
For the flood?
It says, I forgot.
The repairs are made in print, it's not necessarily equipment.
Right. If we got wind washed away, possibly, yes, we would have, we would have to fill that way a bit, but as far as this equipment is concerned, he's responsible for that. We're responsible for our crop.
We're responsible for our property. Did you, do you want to explain, uh, stuff where this is going to be located?
Yes, it's going to be in the northeast corner of the park, uh, which if you were walking down the walking path from behind the, uh, theater, as you walk down right where you started around the bend, back to the right there, you'll see a bunch of, it's a pile thing, and, uh, it'll go right in there. Uh, I can't see us ever utilizing the land for anything except that, or, you know.
Let's be clear, and I don't know if we want to do that.
No, no, and even then, it's going to be right there off the creek.
I know, it's too, it's, yeah.
And I, these have been real successful across the country, drawing a lot of folks. You take on a big weekend, we've already got 10, 20,000 people in the park, that gives them more, and we're trying to create things where they won't want to leave the park. That's, that's our whole goal, that's why we're building camp on the parkway up, and we want to be able to get where they stay in their area and stay with us.
Did Adventure Guild, did you all do the, the zip course up at, uh, up at Ruby Falls?
Yes.
Thought so. I would.
Sounds hot, huh?
It'll be big enough for me to accomplish the goal for it.
That's just condition.
I don't know if any of you remember that horse that used to be on TV that was, had the sway in the middle.
Have we discussed or considered trying to park in, egress, degressing out to the, to the track, to the zip line and stuff? Where will parking be?
Well, we're going to have to put, as we have got over for the, uh, boat launches, we'll have to have a little gravel type road going down there, crush up something to that, and then there'll be parking down there.
Where's the cousin's bathroom?
The one right there at the corner of the soccer field at the running track. It'd be a long way for you to have, you know. But it's, but it's not as far as some of our bathrooms are. And as Counselor Cagle and I talked today, we definitely need bathrooms in park.
Can we, can we go on?
I know.
Okay. Do we, uh, have a motion in regard to resolution 2657?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Have a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second it. I'd like to see a little more design of parking, how it's going to look in the area, bathroom facilities and things like that. That, is it going to be additional expansive, a road, uh, bathrooms, that type of thing?
No. The roadway.
And I'm all for it, you're all for it.
Just the materials, we can do that in-house.
Yes.
Labor done in-house. As far as the bathroom, we're not going to build a separate bathroom out there.
Especially down on the creek where the flood, you know, you know, and they know that.
Well, most people that do that, they probably walk to the bathroom.
Yes, or runs.
What's the word about parking, and actually being accessible?
And I think you'll find that most of them, sir, will be, will be people that'll walk down there and already be in the park, already be parked. I think we will get, uh, when we were meeting with Hugh Morrow of, uh, was it Ruby Falls where you got that? And I was meeting with him, and he, he at one time was, well, partnered with him on this one. And the one thing he kept saying, he's, I've been trying to figure out for years, how to keep people from going down I-75 and coming over and then, of course, going to Ruby Falls. Uh, he felt like it was something that was going to be a pretty big deal to have this. And at one time, he was talking about partnering with the all of it. And then they decided to go along and, and go with it, and go with us, partner with us. We felt like everybody we've talked to, uh, from other places that are doing it, you know, really feel like that this is a blessing for us to have this. And then when we were doing the economic impact, that we did, the study that we did, the one thing they kept saying is, you got to have something, once you get them in the park, that they'll stay in the park, that they'll do something, you know. They made suggestions on driving ranges and splash pads and stuff like that, you know, but, uh, this was something that we could get without being at our expense, and we didn't have to pay for this, but we actually could make some money off of it.
I'm 100% good with it, I just don't want it at another expense coming up, we've got to pay for it.
No, I agree with you. Now, that's.
Things like that.
No, that's not in the agreement.
But one of the things that's, if you pass my proposed budget to you, and there is a piece of equipment, I talked to Counselor Cagle about paper blocks, we can start doing some more painting ourselves, and, uh, that'd be learning curves, learn out there on, you know, putting some of these gravel roads, turn to the asphalt, use additional parking lots and so forth, to learn how to use those things.
Well, so I know the answer, because I asked him last night. He's, he's going to draw his crowd from the soccer field, we have baseball terms, softball terms. So we're not going to have a parking problem other than a parking problem that we've already got.
Yes.
Have another party.
Right.
So if he wasn't coming to success, then we're really going to have a parking problem. So, if he, maybe.
If he really comes to, yeah, if he really becomes a success, he's going, he's exactly right.
Yes.
And that's not.
I'm worried about tables coming down there, instead of using the walking track going around, maybe just walking through the soccer field.
Well, it'll be on the other side of the creek from that.
Yes, sir. I'm parking down there, I'm walking around the soccer field.
I think some of that could be corrected by signage, and just directions, that's how we deal with, because Ruby Falls, a lot of traffic there in a lot of places, and so they can deal with that, which is signage, for teaching purposes.
So, driving back, last night, I saw at least three billboards between Murphy's Borough and Montego advertising not just Ruby Falls, but the zip course at, at Ruby Falls.
I just come back from national, well, not Murphy's Borough, I saw the same ones.
It's, it's a pretty big deal.
You going to advertise East Ridge?
Yes, sir.
You going to say East Ridge, Tennessee?
No. That's not to me, I'm a program director, I'm sorry.
It has to say East Ridge, drop, drop.
We've already have one before, and every one, something to say, Chad, we're trying to say.
We will can try and find with our advertising for our history brand, which is the park at Ruby Falls, as well as a park in St. Augustine, which is open tomorrow, or inside, uh, which is why, down soccer, through the other company, or something.
St. Augustine, or?
Yes. So we got, and we're looking for additional courses across.
How long did it take to build up?
Uh, about six months.
And how's it compared to ours?
Significantly larger, and hopefully with less construction than her.
Okay.
That was one of the.
Hope you read the article today, there's 13 and 15 hurricanes starting to burst and roll forward, sheer on the high side.
You don't want to think about that.
Have a good day there, we're signing, we pay attention to those.
Okay, do we have any other comments or questions? We do have a motion and a second on the floor. Ever roll call, please.
Councilmember Cagle?
Yes.
Councilmember Hilton?
Yes.
Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
Merril?
Thank you, folks.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
That's, uh.
Yes, sir.
How, how many? I have one question, I want to ask.
Tom?
Yes, sir.
Have you done any cord railing down there? Uh, we are, we're sitting on dead top of the rock bed down there.
Uh, we have not yet, uh.
How deep do you have to go?
Uh, we're looking for 70.
70? Would that be in our license, in that?
Whoa. And we'll, we can take a look at that, our.
That's, that's right about saying.
Our goal is to have.
However, sit down there and we had to do some drilling.
They can then fish.
Nobody died, might have.
He stood on a crack foundation. I understand that, I'm sure, I understand that.
Stonefish.
All right. Thank you all. All right, out of 9C, resolution 2658.
A resolution of the City Council of the City of East Ridge, Tennessee, extending the city manager's contract to additional 30 days.
Motion approved.
We have a motion and a second to approve. Essentially what, what this does, it's bridging the gap between now and when we can have full council here to, to vote on a full contract extension. They look at this and say, well, 30 days, that's kind of strange, but that's, that's why it is here. It's just a bridge. So, uh, we do have a motion and a second on the floor. If there are other questions, we'll ask for a roll call, please.
Councilmember Cagle?
Yes.
Councilmember Hilton?
Yes.
Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
Merril?
I have the resolution 2659.
A resolution of City Council of the City of East Ridge, Tennessee, authorizing the issuance of a capital outlay due series 2017 in the amount not to exceed 750,000, providing for payment in 70. City Council awarded the, uh, Camp Jordan Parkway Streetscape Project at the May 11th meeting to, your reconcreed construction in the amount of 725,175 dollars with no alternance. So we're looking at sidewalks 10 foot on one side, 6, 10 foot on the west side, 6 foot on the east side, about 120 trees, and irrigation as well as streetlight, about 35, 36 streetlights going down. Talking with the Tennessee Municipal Bond Fund, since this is a capital project, under $1 million, the max that it goes 12 years. So, term sheet basically, and this is what we're looking at, is a capital outlay in the amount of 750,000. I've asked for a little bit additional dollars in case we run into a problem regarding to unforeseen. I don't believe we will, but I'd like to have a little bit, I don't want to take money out of another fund. So if we have any left over, we can always prepay. Return it 12 years, fixed rate of interest is 2.76, principal is paid annually, and interest is paid semi-annually. We have a copy of the debt service, uh, schedule behind this general memorandum. The resolution will start, will authorize the issuance of this, like, if this is signed off and sent to the state, uh, we should have our money, I'd like to have the money at least endorsed by the Tennessee Municipal Bond Fund before I sign the final contracts. I was taught you don't sign anything until you let the money in the bank, to be sure. You sign the contract, you'll have the money, you'll be obligated by the contract. So that's what this is for, the, uh, principal interest will come from the state sales tax dollars generated within the four region redevelopment, this period of 12 years. And we do have the option, over the next six months to a year, when we get involved with the larger bond issues for export and indemnification, to turn around and refinance this one in 20-year, if we so desire. So that option is, is open, I'm not just informing you of that, I'm not saying we do that tonight, tonight, we're looking at getting the dollars in the end, uh, appropriated to the city for the Tennessee Municipal Bond Fund, so we can get this project underway.
This whole 750 is going to be spent on that project?
Only that project.
On with that project?
Yes, sir.
Because being 725.
25. I didn't want to necessarily just go for the 725, because if I have anything original or unforeseen, you know, they hit out there going up and around, where we may need to change order, I don't believe we're going to, because you never know, I don't necessarily want to take the dollars out of another fund. This is for this project only. And we start doing all these projects, we have, Diane has, has a separate account within the general fund, uh, fund balance, to be able to account for all of this separately. Of course, that builds up now, so this will be its own project.
This money's going to be charged back to the border region?
Yes, sir.
It's not an average of 73,000 a year?
Yes, sir. I'm paying, I'm basically saying 74.5.
Okay.
Yes, sir, about 74.5. So if you look at right now, last, this, this, this year, you see based on last year, 1,250,000 dollars, we have to take from that 412,000, 412,500, and one, this is 837,000 dollars less, so this 74, 74.5 would come from that balance plan. Okay, that ain't no debt service.
I would like to ask a question about this. One point, did you ever foresee that 1.4, maybe that 1.2 or 3?
In fact.
Because I foresee our economy not going to always be going up, our economy's not going to always be going up, we're going to have down.
We're going to have down, matter of fact, yes, I, I do see that, uh.
So what I'm trying to say.
Yeah, I, I, in the 40 years I've been in government, we've had four downturns in the economy, 2007 being the worst of all of them. I can't, it was '86, '91, '98, or '99, and then 2007. Sales tax took a slight nose drop, that pattern. Now, I will say that we will lose 70, 80,000 dollars in 2019. First appropriations coming in because our gross taxes going down from 5 cents to 4 cents. Four of those, out of the four supermarkets we have in the city, two of them are located in the border development district. So that is what I'm projecting that loss will be based on sales taxes, ballpark sales tax numbers. I cannot get exact numbers, state will rely on, but I can give you the ballpark, so I can give an estimate of what that will be. But I do see, I do foresee, it's going to be interesting to respond to your question, is when September comes, when we get our payment for 2017, so 2016, that, if that price goes up significantly or down at all, I don't, I can't say I would project a possible 5% increase, but when Diane and I were looking through all those businesses in the border region, we weren't seeing a lot of new money coming in for projects. Now, that's not to say that between now and next five years, that we will get other budgets coming in. For example, we've got some, some big ones that were very hopeful of coming in, that would generate some big, or state sales taxes into us. But I can't add that in until we know it's coming in, sign over the law.
Reality, we need to be looking at that 1.2 billion for us being in the city banks and, uh, bond issues.
Yeah, if you're looking, like, right now, right now, if you're looking at, you'll get 1.25, taking that down to 837,000, take 80,000 dollars from that, which is the loss that we're going to, we're going to get involved with next year, conservatives, please, just finance with conservatives, and that's, that's the basis of what we've got, yes. 75 will fit very easy in that, actually, one will fit easier than that, some of the other projects.
So this, they, before it puts us down to 600, and then we're going to prompt out two other.
No, 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 the two others don't factor in.
Okay.
The reason why they don't factor in is they are. The reason why they don't factor in is they are generating border region sales tax themselves, and there is a threshold that they have to meet. If they don't meet that, then they lose. So for all these, the Marcus Pizza and the Dunkin' Donuts, those are going to increase that. And I've got that fact, fact in here, too.
Well, I'm just trying to look at.
Right. Basically, what we're talking about here is infrastructure projects which do not generate border region sales tax. These projects don't generate. But they will bring people to the community to buy.
I know the other projects, we have.
Right. But the other thing, the other thing too, yeah, even though we don't get the border region sales tax in the vast pro development region over there, we do get one point one-two-five percent countywide sales tax. And that's coming in pretty healthy at this time. Very well.
That is the general fund, yeah, I think.
Helps the general fund pay for additional personnel this year. When I'm looking at four additional police officers and fire inspector. Yes, that additional sales tax generated helps pay for those hours, as well as the increase in the real estate taxes that we get through the building. Okay, thank you.
Okay. So, I do not believe we have a motion yet, is that correct? All right, we need a motion and a second in regard to resolution twenty-six fifty-nine.
Second.
A motion and a second to approve. Are there any other questions? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Cagle.
Yes.
Councilmember Hilton.
Yes.
Councilmember Williams.
Yes.
Yes. All right, that's all that we have for tonight. Thank you all for being here. And don't forget our Memorial Day service Monday afternoon at one o'clock.